Mr. McNeeley.
Yes, Chair Antovereus.
Okay, this is Chair Antovereus. I was just making sure you could hear me okay? And also on making see if staff's ready to go if you guys are ready to start at 5:30.
Absolutely, thank you. I hear you great and staff is certainly ready to kick off your hearing.
Okay, and I do not see Commissioner Walsh on, do you?
No, I do not see Commissioner Walsh either. I do see one phone number, a 713 phone number that we don't have a name associated with. But that would be the only, the only thing I'm seeing in the meeting that I, that I don't have a name with.
Okay, so we've got Commissioner Ruggles, Tohe, Vice Chair Burton, Best, Wilson, and me. So we've got a quorum, we can.
Yes.
Go ahead. I just didn't want to miss anyone. All right?
Nope.
Do we just have a quorum or do we have an extra?
Let's see, we've got Commissioner Ruggles, Tohe, Vice Chair Burton, Best, Wilson, and me. Am I missing someone?
Yeah, but yeah, you just have a quorum. So we are missing both.
We're missing Commissioners Williams and Walsh.
Williams and Walsh, yes.
So, so yes, Commissioner Wilson, to answer your question, we just have a quorum.
Okay, I'm on the East Coast, so I was thinking I might leave early, but I'll stay.
Okay.
The manager will, will prompt you if we see either of those two commissioners jump on.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McNeeley, this is Chair Antovereus. My clock shows 5:30. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to begin by needing, uh, reading the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the April 24th, 2024 meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. And also, please do not use the comment function for discussions. It is strictly for communicating with staff if you are having a technical issue. So with that, thank you all for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would please stand, Mr. McNeeley, would you please lead us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Let me get sat back down here. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the March 27th, 2024 minutes. If there are no corrections, um, I'll go ahead and accept a motion in a second, please. Commissioner Wilson?
Madam Chair, I have two minor corrections, one on page nine, the fourth line down.
Okay, give me one second to get there. I've got to pull that up on my online. Um, okay, what page on the minutes?
Page nine.
Okay, page nine. Okay, got it?
Fourth line, first characters.
Where it says 148?
Yeah, I don't believe that belongs there.
No, uh, it doesn't. Okay, so let's delete that. Okay, go ahead.
And there is on page 11. Second paragraph, one, two, three, four, five, six. Well, let's see, commission. Oh man, how am I going to identify where this is at? About two-thirds the way down, there's the word calculation at the beginning of a, of a, on the left-hand side.
Right.
Followed by whoa.
Okay, so did a calculation should be to see.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay, yes, let's, let's absolutely make those corrections. Were there any more, Commissioner, uh, Wilson?
No, ma'am.
All right, okay, uh, why don't you go ahead and make the motion?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes as just discussed amended.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of the March 27th, 2024 minutes with the corrections. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams? Aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And this is Chair Antovereus. I also vote aye, the motion passes unanimously. The first item on our public hearing agenda tonight is case number AB 24001 and SUB 24002.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess McNeeley with staff. Uh, the identified cases, AB 2401 is an abandonment and sub SUB 2402 is a amended final plot to the Lakeside Park subdivision. Our property owner here actually of the, of the portion to be, um, to be abandoned is, is the county as managed by Public Works. The applicant is the Schroeder Family Trust, which owns property on either side of this, um, of this right-of-way. And representative is a surveyor on the project, Martin Martin. Um, location is the Lakeside Park subdivision at Mormon Lake. Madam Chair, I just found out from, uh, from my coworkers here, I was not sharing, so I apologize. Uh, should be sharing now, is everyone seeing my screen?
Yes, it is. I was just going to comment on that, so yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So, a couple of points to make here, um, this abandonment, the, the trail right-of-way, dedicated right-of-way is unimproved, it was never built, so it's, it exists on paper. Um, it has never been used. Um, it's a six-foot wide by 97-foot long portion. It's identified as Kirby Trail um, on the old, like, literally historic Lakeside Park subdivision from, uh, from the twenties. And a subdivision amended final plaque goes along with this to document the abandonment of the trail. So when an abandonment is, is requested or required of public rights-of-way, uh, so this was dedicated public right-of-way, it was dedicated to the county. Such, uh, roads or trails were requested to be abandoned because, you know, the, the logic has to be that they no longer serve a public purpose. And per our subdivision ordinance, the abandoned area is transferred to adjacent landowners. In this case, it is the same landowner who owns property on either side of this right-of-way. Here is a vicinity map in the general Mormon Lake area. Um, to get some idea of where we're talking about, the Mormon Lake Road um, runs diagonally through here, and of course, you can see the lake out in this G-zone portion here. This is a zoom in with an aerial of site along with, um, along with property lines. And you can see this portion of, of Kirby Trail, uh, that was dedicated as a part of the subdivision, um, but never improved. And you see the highlighted white of the parcel ownership on either side of that trail. And we will point out to the south, as you can see, um, from this, uh, this image, where there was a trail, uh, continuing all the way through to the south, that was abandoned some years ago. This is a photograph of the area, um, on, on the property where the trail, uh, on paper at least runs through. So for some background, this is a, a really old subdivision plaque was recorded in '26. And of course, the Kirby Trail was dedicated as part of that plaque. Um, as we stated, the trail was never established or improved. The southern portion of the trail was abandoned in 2020. Uh, so the applicant, as we pointed out, owns property on both sides of the trail. So that area will be incorporated into their property per our subdivision ordinance and state statute. And Public Works has confirmed that the county does not need this right-of-way for the trail. And this is a historic image, um, for, which is, which is recorded, it's still legally, uh, valid, of the Lakeside Park subdivision. I guess it was called the Lakeside Park Cabin Site Subdivision. And this is a zoom in on the Kirby Trail portion, so we're talking about this portion right here on the north. And the southern portion is already vacated. And this is a document provided by, um, surveyor, uh, identifying which portion is to be, uh, is to be abandoned and, um, reverted to the adjoining property owners. So justification, um, per our subdivision ordinance, uh, when we look at what requirements are for an abandonment, uh, the county does not have a use for this trail right-of-way. So it really is in the best interest of the public to abandon this unimproved portion of trail. Uh, the county engineers determined they will not need it in the future. The southern half of the trail has already been abandoned. State statutes, uh, allow the county to vacate a right-of-way without compensation, um, if the right-of-way has no public use or market value and the person taking the area agrees to maintain it. Um, and, uh, state statute allows the county to vacate a right-of-way to the adjacent landowners as is proposed here. These are the findings for an abandonment. And per your staff report, staff, uh, was able to make the findings that, uh, that this request meets those. So staff's recommendation is that the commission forward a recommendation of approval of the abandonment, AB 2401, and the final plot amendment, sub 2402, to the Board of Supervisors. And with that, and there are conditions that, uh, that you see in your, um, in your staff report. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeeley. This is Chair Antovereus. I'm not seeing any hands raised. So I do not believe there are any questions. With that, I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening. If so, please state your name and address for the record. And I would also like to ask if you have received the staff report, have read it, and agree with the conditions. So Mr. McNeeley, do you know if we have a representative from the, or the applicant or the representative? We don't, certainly don't have to have.
I think that, that might be me, Michelle Schroder. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, if that's okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Normally, my husband would have been on this call, he's traveling. Um, but yes, ma'am, we have bought the property. It has, it was built in 1954. Um, the cabin we've started, we're, we have restored it. Um, but it had been, no one had walked into it since 1980. We discovered the well, it wasn't even on maps or anything, so we'd like to take care of that spot.
Okay.
I don't know what else to say, thank you.
Okay, uh, would you please, uh, just for the record, because I may have, um, spoken over you, would you please just state your name and address for the record?
Of course. My name is Michelle Schroder. Um, Schroder Family Trust is my family's trust. Um, my home address here is 17493 West Arroyo Way in Goodyear. And the address we're talking about is 372 Mountain View Avenue in Mormon Lake.
Okay.
I'm either writing, driving, or in a meeting. Please leave your name and number and, and it's time to call you, and I'll do it.
That's not me, sorry.
Not me, um. Mr. McNeeley, are we able to determine where that's coming from? Could I please ask everyone on, in this meeting to please mute? There's an unknown user that is not muted and a number that ends in 03. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on. Um, so Ms. Schroder, just to confirm, you have, you do, you've seen the staff report and you have, and you agree with the conditions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm going to ask if there are any commissioners that have questions for Ms. Schroder? All right, seeing none, I'm going to, uh, ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public, open it at commission discussion. And Commissioner Williams, would you please start us off this evening? Um, Commissioner Williams, I think you're muted.
Oh, I am, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, uh, I can make the findings for this, and it seems like it's a good bit of housekeeping, so. That's what I have to contribute.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ruggles?
Uh, thank you. I also can make the findings, uh, that, uh, this is in the public interest. One thing I would like to add, I believe this will take two motions to, uh, uh, finish this up. One for the abandonment and the other one for sub 24 dash 002.
Yes, and that is correct, and it'll be in the form of a recommendation to the board.
Exactly.
Yep.
So, uh, just, uh, wanted to confirm that with everyone.
Yep, okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Tohe?
I'm in support of this. Make the findings, thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Burton?
I can make the findings.
All right, Commissioner Best?
I can make the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson?
I can make the findings.
All right, thank you. This is Chair Antovereus. I also can and agree with, uh, Commissioner Williams' comments that this is a good cleanup. So with that, um, let's do this as a recommendation to the board in two hearings, uh, excuse me, um, in two motions. So with that, I will accept a motion a second for each case, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we recommend to the board approval of AB dash 24 dash 001.
I will second that.
All right, I've got a motion by Commissioner Wilson, a second by Commissioner Ruggles, uh, for a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for approval on AB 24001. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams? Aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Chair Antovereus, I also vote aye, the motion passes unanimously. Uh, let's go ahead and move to SUB 24002.
Okay, I'll, uh, make that motion. I move to forward a recommendation of approval for SUB dash 24 dash 002 to the Board of Supervisors, subject to recommended conditions.
I second that.
Okay, I've got a, a motion by Commissioner Ruggles, a second by Commissioner Wilson, uh, for recommendation of approval to the board for SUB 24002. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams? Aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Um, I thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Tohe, did you vote, did you say aye? I just missed it.
Aye, yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
This is Chair Antovereus. I also vote aye, the motion passes unanimously. The second item on the public hearing agenda is case number CUP 24010.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning Staff. And this is case CUP 24010, the Inspired Adventures Campground. For the application, the applicant is Isaac Block of CDNE. The property owner is Inspired Adventures LLC. The property is located on North Pleasant View Drive, north of the valley area. And the parcel size is 40.13 acres, and that's made out of four different parcels. The zone is the general zone, which is typically a 10-acre minimum single-family residential and agricultural zone. And this request is for a conditional use permit for a 46-unit campground. Here's the vicinity map. Sorry, I'm getting a little bit of echo. Um, the vicinity map here shows, uh, the Valley Airport in the south where the intersection of Highway 64 and Highway 180 is. Um, the valley area as far as where the area plan um, is, where the area plan is affected, uh, ends about right here, north of South Rim Ranches where the subject property is. And the subject property, uh, to get to it, you would turn right off of 64 onto Woodland Ranch Road, and then turn left to go north on North Pleasant View Drive. It is these four parcels here. So everything surrounding the subject property is in the general zone. Uh, most of the properties are vacant, except for Kitty Corner to the northeast is Wander Camp, which is a similar campground that was approved, I believe, in 2021, having a similar density. And then, uh, adjacent to the west and the south side of the subject properties, uh, is an existing single-family residence. As far as the property itself, it's heavily, uh, vegetated with mature pinion juniper trees that are about 10 to 12 feet tall. And here is a photo of the existing southern entrance of the property from Pleasant View Drive, which is on the east of the subject property. Here's a photo from, uh, interior to the subject property. It's just some cinders laid down for driveways. And as far as the proposed development, so this is a commercial campground that would operate seasonally for 180 days per year. The applicant, uh, has stated in their narrative that they would develop it in two different phases with most of the development occurring in the first phase, which would include roadway and parking area construction, 20 of what they're calling organic tents, which are smaller with no plumbing, uh, 10 larger, what they're calling luxury tents, that would have one sink and one toilet. Uh, the first phase would also include a communal restroom and shower trailer, uh, which would primarily serve the organic tents that don't have plumbing. And it would also include communal recreation areas such as yoga and stargazing platform and spa tents. Also a welcome tent near the southern entrance. And in the phase two, which would be about two to three years out in the future, the applicant is looking to add six organic tents and 10 more luxury tents. So that brings the campground to a total of 46 guest-stay tents. And as far as, uh, water and wastewater, those would be vault in the hall. And as far as electricity, the applicant would first start with solar and then possibly move on to getting APS to the property in the future. So these are examples of the sorts of tents that the applicant is proposing. Uh, here, these green-looking ones are what would be the organic tents. And then on the right side here, the larger tents that are more of an earth tone on platforms, those would be, these are examples of the luxury tents, what they would look like. And then as far as the community recreation, uh, areas, they would be sort of open area with a fence surrounding it. And here is the proposed site plan, so the applicant is proposing two different driveways off of Pleasant View Drive. Um, they would move around the property. And the organic tents would mostly be up here on the north end, close to where the mobile restroom uh, would be located and, and the mobile shower. And then the luxury tents would be more in this area, more central to the site, coming around to the southeastern portion of the property. That's where the applicant is proposing some of the more recreational and communal, uh, areas, as well as the welcome tent. And then the spa tents near the south-central portion of the property and the stargazing yoga platform. One of the units is set aside in the southwest, uh, corner of the property, what they're labeling here on the site plan as homestead. This would be where the owner and manager of the campground would stay. So I did some measurements on the aerial photos from where the nearest neighboring residential property is, sort of off of the screen here on the left. And from all of the guest tents, there's about a 250-foot buffer, uh, from that nearing, uh, nearest neighboring residence. And I just wanted to show a photo of, this is the nearest neighboring residence from the approximate location when I was on site of where that homestead area is located. As far as zoning ordinance requirements for campgrounds, uh, the applicant did not submit a landscaping plan and, uh, but staff looked at the site and found that the existing pinion juniper trees would meet the zoning ordinance requirements for landscaping. And as far as, uh, lighting and signage plans that you might normally see, uh, the applicant did not submit those plans, and they're likely to be really pretty minimal. So staff So staff has conditioned the staff report so that the applicant will just meet the requirements of those and submit permits for lighting and signage. And those will be reviewed prior to issuance of a building permit. As far as physical access, this is not located on a county-maintained road, so the zoning ordinance requires the applicant to improve and maintain the roads, so Pleasant View Drive and Woodland Ranch Road out to Highway sixty-four to a standard that is capable of being traversed by a forty-two thousand pound vehicle. And that is also recommended as a condition in the staff report as being met prior to occupancy of the campground on the property. And as far as fire safety and emergency services plans that are required for all campgrounds prior to occupancy of the site, the applicant has not submitted one, but they have been working with High Country Fire, which is in Red Lake, which also is the fire organization that works with Wander Camp, the nearby Kitty Corner campground. And just today, I was sent from the applicant sort of a contract for the subscription services. We'd be looking at getting that fire safety and emergency services plan and approving that prior to occupancy of the campground or constructing any of the temporary structures. There are some additional zoning ordinance standards that are specific to the campground use, and this is a table that was in your staff report. So all of the other requirements are met, such as having a minimum parcel size of ten acres, maximum density of two units per acre in the general zone, and these other requirements that you see on the screen. And I'm happy to address any of those if the commission has any questions, but for now, I will move on to citizen participation. So the applicant did notify property owners within one mile of the subject property, so that was sixty-seven different owners. They invited these property owners to an onsite meeting on February twenty-seventh of this year to discuss what they would be requesting before you all tonight and to get any comments or concerns addressed during that meeting. Five neighboring property owners attended, and they did have some concerns, one of them being road improvement and maintenance, and the other being guest traffic leading to accidental trespass. Those were concerns that were noted in the citizen participation plan meeting. The applicant's response to those was that the, as I just stated in one of the earlier slides, that the county requires that they improve and maintain the roads to Highway sixty-four. The applicant also noted that they're happy to work with neighbors on different methods to avoid trespass, including signage. And I just wanted to note additionally that there are surprisingly clearly posted street signs in this area, and there's just a couple turns. So ingress to the site should be pretty clear for visitors. And as the commission is aware, there are four findings of fact that need to be made in order to approve the case. I have sort of a rundown of staff's analysis of those findings, and staff is able to make all four findings of fact for approval of the case. If there are any questions from the commission about those, I'm happy to address those. But at this time, staff is recommending approval of case CUP twenty four zero one zero, subject to the conditions of the staff report. And on this next slide, I have just a brief overview of what those conditions are. If the commission wants to go through those, I'll bring up the actual language, which is much more thorough, and we can do that, but I do want to make the commission aware that these are the same conditions as were used in the last approval of a campground. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. This is Chair Ontiveris. Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two quick questions, Zach. It appears there's one tent for all staff and associated people. So that might be at this facility. Is that correct?
Commissioner Wilson, that is my understanding, and my understanding is that the owners and managers that would be on site twenty-four seven, that's the couple that owns the property.
Okay, to man, that's, that seems a little unreasonable, but okay. And the second question relates to the landscape plan. If we're counting the existing natural vegetation as the landscape plan, does that mean that it has to remain as is, or can it be all cut down?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wilson, there is a condition in the staff report about the landscaping plan, and that condition reads, it requires them to keep all of the vegetation, that's not, to keep it to the extent possible. And I think that that's part of the draw of campgrounds typically, and the applicant might be able to address that also. So I don't think they'd be looking to clearcut the property or anything.
But they could. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wilson, were, was that all?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, Vice Chair Burton?
Yeah, first I'd like to ask somebody to mute. There's somebody unmuted right now, Thomas something.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I just had one little question. So I'm looking at the site plan, and it's noting an above-ground sewage vault and tank. What exactly is that going to look like?
So, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Burton, so I don't know exactly what you're looking at, but what I can say is that my understanding is that these little black things on the site plan, these are each individual vault and hall, and it's like a small tank.
Okay, so it's going to be on the small side, unobtrusive to neighboring properties?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's, that was my biggest concern, was that something was going to be placed there that was going to be an eyesore or a potential concern for neighbors, and I want to make sure that that's not going to be the case.
Understandable. I don't think these will be high-impact at all.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, your hand is raised again.
Excuse me.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
Thank you. Condition eight is applicants shall delineate property boundaries. What is the standard for that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Best, there's not a real steadfast standard for that. And I think that the way that this condition is written is it allows flexibility for the applicant to work with staff at the time of the building permit approvals and inspections, so that it could be something like either wildlife-friendly fence, it could be some signage. So I think that's the intent of the way that this is written.
Okay, but you, so you will inspect that, and you will be satisfied that a reasonable person arriving at any part of the boundary would know not to cross it, that they're crossing onto private land, because you've got you know, one or two people there monitoring this situation. You've got a lot of real estate out there. You've got folks who just are going to want to go for a hike. And they have got to be convinced that they shouldn't. So it'll be interesting to see what you come up with, but you are, that's, that is your goal? Is that correct?
Absolutely. I completely understand where you're coming from, and that's an impact that staff is concerned about as well. And I'm, if there are any suggestions that you know, you want to forward to me after the hearing, or if you want me to talk to you about it or anything, I'm happy to do that, but I feel confident that I can meet the intent of this condition and what the commission is concerned about here.
Okay, be strong. Number fourteen. We were talking about what you can cut down. Plan to minimize topsoil and native plant disturbance during this construction and operation. So you will approve at some point a site plan and a construction plan that minimizes taking out trees and disturbing soils. Since we know in an environment, dry environment like that, once you disturb the soil, chances of grass coming back are not in our lifetimes. So that's what your plan is, to approve that plan?
Absolutely. So section four point four E two, that's referenced there. It has a pre-construction, during construction and post-construction requirements for weed mitigation and management. And it's pretty decently prescriptive. And yeah, so I'll be bonded during all the way through.
Okay. And what is our take on OHVs these days? I can't remember what we did in the last campground. We have done, we have treated them various ways.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Best, I'm happy to answer that question based on our experience and what we've discussed, really going all the way back to your retreat last year. OHV use, OHV rental would not be permitted in this zone at all. So that is not a permitted use. OHV recreation is also not a permitted use. That would be a separate conditional use permit. So an OHV cannot be rented and cannot be used recreationally on the site. And that's, and that's the extent of the capability of the zoning ordinance to regulate OHVs.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. This is Chair Ontiveris, and I would like to go back to Commissioner Wilson's comments about the existing shrubs. I'd like to read thirteen for the record, condition thirteen. It says, "A waiver is approved to allow the existing trees, shrubs, and grasses to be retained and approved as meeting the required landscaping for the site. Removal of existing plants and trees shall be limited to the minimum needed for development of the site and is needed to meet firewise standards." So on, Commissioner Wilson, my point being is that they cannot go in and clearcut it. They would be in violation of their CUP.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You bet. So with that, I do not have any questions, and I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission. If so, please state your name and address for the record. And I would also like to ask if you have received and read the staff report, and if you agree with the seventeen conditions.
Yeah. Oh, I can speak. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Steve Selkey. I'm from Flag. My address, my home address is thirty-two oh seven North Jamison Boulevard in Flag. We've had the property for about two years, and we were actually getting the property originally just to live on. And we decided that we would, wanted to do this, pursue this, so we could have, you know, actually work in home and be at the same place, basically. I just wanted to make a couple of points. I want to keep the property as natural as possible. In the process, over the last couple of years, we haven't cut down not, not one live tree. There's plenty of dead wood that has to be cleaned up. But we have no intentions of doing any, any cutting at all of any living trees. Actually, we've done everything we could to go around everything at this point. Some of the roads, we have to work on the roads on the property, but the roads to the property, Woodland Ranch and Pleasant View, I just wanted to let you guys know that those are all upgraded. There should have been an engineering report submitted with Wander Camp, because they're actually at the end of the road. So those roads should be compliant. Just wanted to ease your mind on that. There was a question about the sewage tanks. Those are very low-profile, if you want to look them up, but the name of the tank is called Polyjon. They're environmentally equipped tanks. They're only about sixteen or eighteen inches high and like six by eight feet. So many of them will actually be placed underneath the back of the luxury structure. Just wanted to say that, so there, there's no cosmetics involved. Exactly, something like that. They're also stackable. There's, they go up to three hundred gallons, which should be enough to pump maybe once a month. As far as the border signs, we had already gone ahead and looked at border markings. There's signs that you can put up along the border that are very nice, very respectful, that we'll be posting along the property line to make sure nobody intercedes on other people's property. We want to make sure that everything is as copacetic and and nice for everybody as possible. We want this to be, be a really good experience and to really be good for visitors coming to our area. I don't know what else. If you have any other questions, I hope I addressed most of your concerns.
Yes, I think, I think that you did. And just to confirm, you did get the staff report, and you do agree with the conditions.
I do. I have a copy right here in front of me. Read it completely, and it seems like everything is, is, I can take care of. I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, all right. I'm going to ask, do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? All right, I'm seeing none. I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand. Okay, not seeing any, I am going to close it to the public and open it to commission discussion. Commissioner Williams, would you please start us?
Yeah, I can make the findings for this. Seems like our campground things are getting pretty streamlined and consistent, and this one doesn't seem like there's anything different, so I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Thank you. I have reviewed this rather thoroughly. I have nothing else to add to the discussion, because I can make the findings. I think it's another worthwhile development. So, that being said, I guess I'm ready to move on to other commissioners and their opinions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Tohe.
Thank you. I make the findings as well, and good luck with everything. Sounds really great.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best.
Well, I think that we are putting a lot of trust in our staff to make this a great project, and luckily, we have a very trustworthy staff, so. I can make the findings. I would enjoy, at some point, one of, when one of these campgrounds is built out, it would be great to do a tour of one. And just to get a little more boots-on-the-ground feel for for how they look, and if there's anything that we are not thinking of. But I can make the findings. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
I can make the findings.
Thank you. This is Chair Ontiveris. I can as well. So let's go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please.
All right, Chair Ontiveris, you did forget me. But I can make the findings.
I'm very sorry. I did skip right over you. All right, thank you.
Hey, this is Chairman Walsh, and you forgot me as well, so I'll second it.
Oh, I can make the findings. I'm going to tell you that I didn't realize that Commissioner Walsh was with us. Have you been with us this whole time, Commissioner Walsh?
Yeah.
Yeah, she had the same issues I did. She couldn't get in from the link that she had.
Ah, okay, so just for the record, on Vice Chair Burton and Commissioner Walsh have both stated, if I'm reading or understanding correctly, that they can make the findings.
Yes, and I would like to, to make a motion that we approve CUP 2410.
I will second that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles jumped in there. So I have a motion by Vice Chair Burton and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of CUP 24010 with the conditions as stated in staff report. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Yeah, this is Chair Antevaris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the public hearing agenda is AM 24001.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess with staff and Melissa Shaw, our long range planner, will be presenting that item. So Melissa, when you're ready, if you could go ahead and share your screen.
Thank you. Can you see my screen now?
See it great?
Okay. Thank you, Chair Antevaris and commissioners. I am here to introduce PZ AM 24001. This is a minor amendment to the Coquenino County Comprehensive Plan. And we'll just jump right into the details. The specific amendment is to the major amendment adoption timeline. And the specific change that we are requesting is a an amendment to chapter one of the comprehensive plan, specifically the section titled "The Plan", Future Amendments, Major Amendments, and it's on page 14 of the comprehensive plan. Right now, currently, both the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance require, and then this is verbatim, that major amendments shall be heard once per calendar year and shall be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting in October of that year. The application deadline for major amendments shall be May 1st of each year. We just want to point out that this does comply with statutory requirements that require all major amendments proposed for adoption to the comprehensive plan by the board shall be presented at a single public hearing during the calendar year the proposal is made. And so our comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance were both written to comply with statute and that is the language that I read just previously in the earlier paragraph. So we are proposing to change the month that is currently required for major amendments. And so change that sentence to read, "All applications for major plan amendments to the comprehensive plan shall be presented at a hearing within 12 months of the date of submission of a complete application." This would still meet the statutory requirements that major amendments be heard once per calendar year, but it creates more flexibility and doesn't limit staff, applicants, and, and the commission from needing to hear that at that October, at the October hearing date, because that has created some issues with previous area plans as well as we're looking at it creating timeline issues with our comprehensive plan update. So we've looked at different jurisdictions around Arizona and many of them are going to this more flexible approach instead of naming a single month in which major amendments would be heard. It is a flexible date, but they will still be heard once per calendar year. So going in and looking at the amendment criteria for a minor amendment, again, we're proposing that this be a minor amendment to the comprehensive plan and these criteria listed here are what is considered to be the criteria that a minor amendment must meet. So if you look at number three, the highlighted line here, that text changes and corrections that do not compromise the intent or impact the substantive mixture and balance of the plan, that is a criteria that we're proposing this amendment meets. It doesn't have any substantial changes. It's not making any changes to a goal or policy. It's simply a timeline change as to when a major amendment can be heard, but it will be in compliance with statute. So there's more to think about other than criteria. There are findings. And the, there are these, this list of findings that the minor amendment needs to comply with and you can see that many of these, the, the amendment is not applicable, so it does constitute an overall improvement to the county in that it will create flexibility when a major amendment must be scheduled for public hearing. It will not adversely impact a portion of the county or the existing character. That's not an applicable criteria. It's also, it is supported by our vision for the future and goals and policies of the plan. This is a minor text amendment. So the, the other applicable criteria is that it benefits the county and it will benefit the entire county by providing that additional flexibility. And so this is just a, an image of the actual track changes on page 14 of our plan where you can see the actual addition and then the strikeout in terms of how that would look. So again, the amendment would read, the, the text, the text would read under changing, taking a major amendment, that all applications for major plan amendments to the comprehensive plan shall be presented at a single public hearing within 12 months of the date of submission of a complete application. And then the red strikeout is what would be replaced by that. And so with that then, we do recommend that the planning commission forward this case to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Shaw. Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Shaw, a major amendment to the plan would be initiated internal to the community development. Is that correct?
Well, an applicant could also initiate a major amendment to a plan if there was, it doesn't need to be internal to community development department. An applicant may submit an application to amend the plan. That could also be considered a major amendment.
And if we had on the first of January, had a meeting and considered a major amendment, that would prohibit us from doing it again for another 12 months? Is that correct?
That is correct. And we are, that is, again, you know, we're, we are still limited in having that once a year hearing, whether it be whatever month that is. So that's why we felt that including the language within 12 months of submission of a complete application. A complete application is, is important because those could be submitted and then we could still hear several amendments at one hearing if that was the case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I am not seeing any other hands raised. So, on I'm going to ask if there is anyone, you know, you are the presenter and the applicant in this case. So I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public, open it up at commission discussion. Commissioner Williams?
I don't see any issue with this moving forward with it?
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles?
Thank you. After reviewing this, I believe that this is an excellent way to deal with the problems we've had before. Same thing based on my previous experience going back a few years. So I think it is well worth forwarding a request or, or a recommendation to the board supervisors to adopt this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tohe.
I also support the recommendation to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burton.
I can support recommending we move forward to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Commissioner Best.
This seems like a very good housekeeping and efficiency measure and I can support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
I can make the findings.
Commissioner Walsh?
I can make the findings. Thank you.
This is Chair Antevaris. I can also make the findings, so I will accept a motion in a second, please. It'll be in the form of a recommendation to the board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of PNZ-AM-24-001.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, a second by Vice Chair Burton to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for case number PZ AM 24001. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
This is Chair Antevaris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. Final item on public hearing tonight is case number AM 24002.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess McNeely with staff. AM 2402 is proposed zoning ordinance amendments. Are you seeing my screen okay?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. So, this is, this was initiated, this round of zoning ordinance edits was really initiated in conjunction with the case you just heard, AM 2401. So, section 5.13 of the zoning ordinance corresponds with the, the comprehensive plan major amendment standards and stipulations that Ms. Shaw just took you through in, in the, the minor amendment to the comprehensive plan. So in your staff report for this item, the zoning ordinance amendments, this is item number 18. So as, as Ms. Shaw outlined, this would remove the October comprehensive plan major amendment hearing requirement. It would allow any month within the 12 months of application for that hearing. And, and the point of this for the, for the community is to improve timing flexibility. And as you all know, we are in the midst of updating both the county's comprehensive plan and the Flagstaff Regional Plan. So potentially this could give us some flexibility to, to keep those two separate when it comes to hearings if necessary. We want to let you know on the proposed amendments, as you see in your staff report, I would certainly refer you to your staff report. Items one through 20 of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. They have been online for, for a month since your study session last month. Our department website has had a, had a highlight link to them. The county did a press release directing people to those amendments and to staff for comments. We have met the posting and advertising in the local newspaper per state statute requirements. And for that effort, we have received four communications from the community. One was just really looking for some general application clarification and was, didn't, and once, once that, once that system understood some clarification, they didn't have any comments. And then we've had three regarding updates to section 3.19, the utility scale renewable, renewable energy ordinance. That would be item number 14 in the staff report. So specifically, when we look at this one, this one proposed update on item 14 on page three of your staff report, it's to section 3.19, utility scale renewable, renewable energy. We've received three comments requesting essentially more discussion and input. We also did receive one comment supporting one edit, one specific edit. And I emailed the commissioners earlier today, so you could read all of that input directly. So with that input and based on what we, what we have proposed in spirit, in keeping in spirit with the intent of this round of edits to the zoning ordinance, staff does recommend tabling item 14, item 14 from your staff report, and those would be the Rio amendments. We recommend tabling those for further discussion and input along with our partners in these matters. When it goes to the other 19 amendments that are proposed in your staff report, the intent is certainly to be non-substantive. These are based on practical code use and they're really offering some flexibility, efficiency, and addressing some emerging trends that our department sees. So staff does recommend tabling any other amendment among those 19 that might need, that might need more discussion or input coming out of your public hearing this evening. So those other 19 amendments start on page two of the staff report. We have not received any feedback or comments on those 19 proposed amendments. And I would like to take this, this moment right now, Madam Chair, to ask the commissioners before we go to recommendations, if they have any questions, comments, or clarifications specific to those amendments, because I can pull those up and, and get input from the commissioners on those at this point.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Commissioner Best, please go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I'm glad that we're tabling number 14. I think we need to do some more thinking about that. Number 15, is there a reason we couldn't leave it as it is as far as the building perimeter landscaping and, and have an applicant ask for a variance? To me, building perimeter landscaping is exactly where I want it. I know we've had some, we've had some landscaping required inside like storage facilities that was definitely not needed. And, you know, we gave variances for that. I would think that we would, personally, I'd like to see some landscape around, landscaping around the perimeter of buildings if possible. If not, I'm happy to give a variance, but I would like to start with with that in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Looking at number 14, I, excuse me, not 14, number 15 that Commissioner Best referred to. Mr. McNeely, would you please respond to that, to Commissioner Best's question?
Absolutely. Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. We have found that our landscaping requirements just do not fit reality with development in the vast majority of unincorporated Coquenino County. So the items you see are the few items that require review by the planning and zoning commissioners, such as conditional use permits. When a conditional use permit is required for a self, self-storage facility, those have been the worst to meet this requirement. It is, it is literally impossible for a self-storage facility where you have rows of small buildings to meet the landscaping requirements. They do not have enough acreage on their site to install the number of plants that, that this requirement generates. So even among other more simple developments that they just have one building on the site, it has been very difficult for those sites to meet this requirement. I certainly understand Commissioner Best's offer of, while they, an applicant can get a variance, we need these standards to meet, to be functional and realistic for projects that are permitted by right. There are many, many projects that go through the permitting process through our department that are just permitted by right. They have to meet the standards of the zoning ordinance. They're not coming before a public body for a public hearing, so there's no opportunity for them to request a variance unless they're going to go to the Board of Adjustment for a variance. That is a, that's a pretty arduous process with a pretty high bar to be granted a variance. You have to demonstrate there's something unique about your property. There's a hardship in, in meeting code requirements. There have been a couple in recent years approved by the Board of Adjustment, but we really need the code to function. but we really need the code to function for your average commercial development that is permitted by right. And currently, with this building perimeter requirement for landscaping, it's, it's just too high volume for landscaping. We also understand water concerns in our community, and we're highly encouraging and incentivizing people to use the existing native landscaping on their property and not add some landscaping that is going to require watering. So we hear it from, from several sides that there's not enough acreage on their property to, to accomplish the landscaping requirement, and that it really is not in keeping with the county's conservation values for water. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions on that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Commissioner Best?
Well, we've just had a case where we're counting on staff to make decisions, and I wonder if there is a sort of a middle ground. And, and I don't know if there is, and I don't know exactly how it would work. I just hate the idea of not having perimeter landscaping around a great big commercial property. I understand maybe sometimes it's impossible. Maybe hopefully we would use native landscaping that exists, and native landscaping is really the basis of our landscaping anyway. Is there a middle ground here? Where staff could kind of work it out with the the value of getting landscaping around the building if possible.
Mr. McNeely, would you please address that?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Best. Landscaping is still required on the site. It's typically the frontage, a public-facing frontage where, where the community is really wanting landscaping. Likewise, there's landscaping required in buffer space if the commercial site is bordering residentially zoned property. So this is landscaping specific, like literally located along the perimeter of a building. And generally, when a building is built, it is almost impossible to retain the native landscaping right along the perimeter of that building because there was grading, probably parking improvements, circulation improvements that were made in order to develop the building. So really, we feel the public facing and the buffering for compatibility with adjacent residential properties is still maintained. We see many projects where the building perimeter landscaping, again, this, what we're removing here is just the landscaping that is, that is within, that is alongside the footprint perimeter of a building on the site. That is what's being proposed to be removed because often that landscaping isn't even visible to the public and is really not serving, is not serving any need in making the building or the site more compatible with the surrounding area.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean, if as long as the perimeter doesn't include the front or a perimeter, a, a, a part of the perimeter between the, the site in question and a residential area or even a different zone, that, that mitigates it quite a bit. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
As someone who has lived through this experience once, I, I would advocate that this is actually a really good change, especially recognizing the diversity of the environment that exists in our county with respect to what the existing properties and natural landscape may or may not look like, and having arbitrary code-required types of landscaping that actually might be completely inconsistent. I know I invested significant amounts of money installing the landscaping that was required just to watch the prairie dogs destroy it all and, and have to replace it. So giving the additional flexibility to staff to make sure that the landscaping is consistent with what would be appropriate for the, the specific area they're, they're located in and the natural environment that currently exists there, I think is actually a really good change. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
Yeah, I'm going to have to come in in support of Commissioner Wilson's comments. This is exactly, what he is talking about is exactly the same thing that I have seen over the years I have been on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and have made recommendations that go right along with what he has just said in order to accommodate the differences that we see throughout an extremely large county. So, that's it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I'm going to ask the commissioners, going back to Mr. McNeely's invitation for questions, comments, or concerns. Do commissioners have any other concerns, comments, or questions on any of the other proposed changes? Okay, yes. Commissioner Ruggles, your hand is up.
Yeah, I, after reviewing all of these, the only thing I can say, having served on the the Advisory Committee for the last zoning update, I, I was somewhat surprised in that I'm personally responsible for not catching a couple of these. I think they're very, very good changes worthwhile and are very, very good updates that solve some potential problems. So yeah, that's, that's enough.
All right, all right. Yeah, don't beat yourself up over that, Commissioner Ruggles. It's okay. Commissioner Best?
I wanted to say about number 14 that I, I was going to recommend tabling it because I think that we've got some projects going up now, in particular the Babette Ranches projects, that I, I think are going to help us work out some of the issues that we might want to change in the Rio, the Renewable Energy Ordinance. And I think it'd be a good idea to wait and see how that works out. We've got such a a good applicant in that case that we can work with, basically a local person, and I think we'll learn some lessons, and at the end of that, when that's installed, I think it'd be good to come back. I think this is a little premature to be working on this, so I'm glad that we're tabling number 14. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. All right, I am not seeing any other hands raised, Mr. McNeely of Commissioners. So I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I am not seeing any either, and I do completely support tabling number 14. I think that it is appropriate to do that. So, on, Mr. McNeely, as a point of order here, we're going to move forward on this to pass this. How do we pull 14 off?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. We have a slide up for you. Staff can make the findings, and we recommend that if the Planning and Zoning Commission can make the findings, they recommend as approved, as recommended by staff, items 1 through 20 in your staff report, removing item 14.
Got it. Okay. All right. I think that we're ready to move forward with that, and thank you for that. Okay, I'll accept a motion in a second, please.
Okay.
I'll make a motion forward a recommendation of approval for AM 24002 to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, and Commissioner Williams, can you put that specific language in your motion that's on the screen right now?
Oh, right. Removing item 14, I can make a motion to forward a recommendation of approval for AM 24002 to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, excuse me, Williams, a second by Commissioner Ruggles to forward this to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval for items 1 through 20, but removing item number 14. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh? Commissioner Walsh, I think you're muted.
Aye.
Thank you, and this is Chair Antiveras. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. Final item on the agenda is called to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, my clock shows 6:46 PM, and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, commissioners. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.